Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, April 2nd, 2018. I ask that you all please rise for brief invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, as we meet in regular session, we are ever thankful for the many nice events that have occurred in our community in the last few days, certainly this past weekend with all the Easter services in our various churches and then the fun and family activities that were carried on by Batavia Chamber and Main Street and the assorted committees working with them. For the Easter egg hunt, I think caused some very special moments in our community and makes us ever appreciative of the neat place we live and the quality of life that has been created here. As always tonight, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask that a special blessing be showered on them and all those with them as they go about their vital mission. As always, we want to remember our community and our first responders, and as I'm saying this, I'm hearing sirens blowing by, so we're on our way yet again. We just ask that a special blessing be showered on them as they go about their vital missions in defending our community and serving us ever so well. Tonight, we ask for direction and understanding and vision as we act on the items of business before us, ever mindful that in the hearts and minds of each and every member of the city council, we are here to do what is in the best interest of our community, both for today and in the future. We ask for all these blessings. I'm here.
Your Honor, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pass the say, Kirk, to please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chanset.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Ure.
Here.
Saron.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Let the record reflect that we have thirteen of the fourteen elected aldermen present in the county for us, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman, Atack, do you have anything?
I don't have anything this evening.
I have one in the fact that we got called about four o'clock this afternoon by Holly Dickman, who expressed her regret she can't be here tonight. She went to Michigan to pick up her children, and she got caught up in some delays, so she will not be here. So we'll take nine off the agenda.
Do you want, should we amend the agenda? Do you want?
Motion to second. Motion to second to amend the agenda to remove item number nine. Any discussion on that? Kirk, call the roll, I guess.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ure.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ure.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, the thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Moving then to item number six, which is, let me get up to my other podium here. Well, there are times in the city council when you have a bittersweet moment, and this is one of those times. I guess the good thing I can say about what we're about to do is this is finally the time when Jeanette gets to keep the plaque.
Yes, we've had many.
We've done this several times now, and we've always taken it back because we had one more occasion to do, so tonight's the final time we have to do it. But it's hard for me to say as much as I should say about Jeanette and her service to this community. As you all know, she has been my secretary for a number of years. It says here on the plaque, twenty-three years of dedicated service to Mayor Jeffrey Shulke and the city of Batavia. And I have had a really great run here in my term as mayor with all the very dedicated people that served as my secretary. There's probably three, four.
Four.
And Jeanette is certainly at the top of the pack here, is somebody who really has served the longest and been with me. She certainly knows everything there is to know about Batavia, because when you're the mayor, you get all kinds of things coming at you, most of them over the phone or on the email, some of which is not ever to be repeated. I mean, you have a job that you take an oath of secrecy when you get hired, that you don't repeat what's going on, and then you have this, I would call it, is the cast of characters of citizens that become what we would describe as regular visitors to the city council hall and to the mayor's office. And you get to know those people, many of whom have a specific idea or agenda or thing that they want to complain about or whatever it is. And so Jeanette, I think, in some instances, has listened to the same pitch maybe ten, fifteen times from certain people who have something that's not going right, whether it's a barking dog, or it's loud music, or it's a car parked next to their driveway, or somebody's camper trailer parked in their neighbor's yard. I mean, there's a lot of stuff out there. And it's not unique to Batavia. It comes across wherever you're a mayor. If you talk to the other mayors in the region, everybody's got them. I sometimes think I got less some of that than some of the rest of them out there out there, because there's some really wild and willy tales. But the person who serves as your secretary is the one who really gets to keep the law and order and the agenda as to, well, this one called again, are we going to be able to do anything for him? Probably not, but, you know, she's the listening ear, and if she were to get paid for every minute that she stood there and listened to somebody having a bad day, she would be walking out of here with a pretty good-sized check tonight. So, thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
It's been a great honor to work with you.
Yes.
And we have the city council agreed in this special sign that kind of describes Jeanette's career with the city of Kane. And in a lot of respects, always in a good way, it has been Jeanette's way, because she's maintained law and order, she's listened to many assouring stories, and she's risen to the occasion when there was a need for, you know, some further direction or some hide-and-go-seek, and sometimes it had to be played.
Yeah, one time I was told I wasn't a good liar.
So anyway, I will present you that. And then here is the plaque, again, "Jeanette Armbrust, Administrative Assistant, in appreciation of twenty-three years of dedicated service to Mayor Jeffrey Shulke and the city of Batavia, March 30th, 1995 to March 29th, 2018." So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I started with the city in 1995, and I know that because my grandson was six weeks
old at the time, and was the receptionist for two and a half years, and then I came upstairs and came into the mayor's office. Suzie Petkus, who was the mayor, showed me the ropes, and I just sort of slid into the position when she left. And I really have appreciated everybody that I've seen, known, worked with. And Anthony is really great, so because Anthony is here, I feel like I can go and leave it in good hands. Thank you all.
Okay, next thing is item seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anything this evening? Okay, moving then to item number eight. We have a need, as you know, we have a three-member board of fire and police commissioners, and we have to keep those folks really tight and legal. And so Nancy Vance's term is about to expire, and so I'd like to get this done before that happens, so I'd like to reappoint Nancy Vance, who's currently serving as chairman of the group, to another three-year term as member of the Batavia Fire and Police Commission, and I'd ask for a motion of a confirmation.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, next thing is item seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anything this evening? Okay, moving then to item number eight. We have a need, as you know, we have a three-member board of fire and police commissioners, and we have to keep those folks really tight and legal. And so Nancy Vance's term is about to expire, and so I'd like to get this done before that happens, so I'd like to reappoint Nancy Vance, who's currently serving as chairman of the group, to another three-year term as member of the Batavia Fire and Police Commission, and I'd ask for a motion of a confirmation.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ure.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, we have nothing under item number nine. Item ten, where we have tonight Chief Deike, who's here, and he has with him Stephanie Hansen, who is the person that kind of oversees Tri-City ambulance, and Alderman Wolf and I serve on the board that she oversees. We meet about every other month, and she always has everything right and order, and we have, as I know most of you saw, we have a new vehicle to respond to strokes now, and she's here to talk a little bit about it, but I'll let Chief Deike do the introduction.
Well, as most of you saw, the mobile stroke unit is sitting outside there. It's a pretty impressive unit. I have somebody from Northwestern Central DuPage Hospital to talk about it, but a brief introduction. Stroke is the leading cause of disability and the fifth-leading cause of death in the United States, and research has determined that early intervention has a potential to greatly impact patient outcomes. Northwestern Medicine Central DuPage Hospital, one of the few hospitals in Illinois that have been awarded the Advanced Comprehensive Stroke Center designation, have implemented a state-of-the-art mobile stroke unit to bring stroke care directly out to the field, to the patients. This mobile stroke unit is the first of its kind in Illinois and one of the first in the world. The mobile stroke unit has been working in conjunction with local emergency service agencies in DuPage County, and this month, they will begin servicing Batavia and Eastern King County in partnership with Tri-City ambulance and the local fire departments. So I don't want to take all this thunder to talk about the unit, but this is Mayor, and he's a representative from Central DuPage.
Great job. Good evening. Hi, my name is Mayor. I'm the program manager of the mobile stroke unit. I want to start off by thanking Chief Deike and Stephanie Hansen for having us out here tonight in the council. It's a great pleasure to be out here to talk to you about a very unique program that's only available in a handful of communities across the nation and will very soon be servicing areas of Batavia. So, you know, Chief Deike talked about how strokes are very prominent, about 800,000 individuals suffer strokes a year, that's about one every forty seconds. One out of every four minutes, an individual dies from a stroke, so the prevalence is significantly high, making it the leading cause of disability in the U.S., accounting for over $30 billion in just treatment. And that statistic is going to grow within the next ten years by at least 12% for just prevalence. So the goal behind the mobile stroke unit is to reduce time to treatment. That's our biggest goal. So we went live in January of 18th of last year. We've serviced over 400 patients thus far, and when we do a comparison of how we function in comparison to conventional care, we shave off about 30 minutes a time. So what does 30 minutes really mean? Thirty minutes, every minute you have a stroke, you lose about 1.9 to 2 million neurons a minute, so that's the equivalent of about two days of disability. So those minutes start adding up. So the difference between 30 minutes of treatment can be the difference between living and dying, could be the difference between walking out of the hospital and requiring some kind of assistance, whether it's total care or even extended rehab. So there's quite a bit of literature to discuss the potential effects of earlier time to treatment. So with the mobile stroke unit, it is an ambulance that's essentially a hospital on wheels. It's a combination of the intensive care unit, the emergency department, diagnostic imaging, laboratory, pharmacy, and EMS, all rolled into one. So we partner with local EMS on the scene, and we bring this ambulance that has an embedded 16-slice semen CT scanner onboard. That's one of the most sophisticated diagnostic imaging devices available on an ambulance today. We're able to do scans right there on the ambulance, those scans are transmitted back to the hospital. The upload time to the hospital is about a minute, minute and a half. We've got telemedicine and encrypted VPN routers onboard that can send those images securely back to the hospital. Once they're back to the hospital, a stroke neurologist and a neuroradiologist will review the images, and we are able to rapidly triage, diagnose, and even start treatment in the back of the ambulance before we start going back to the hospital. So once that image is done, we livestream the physicians to the back of the ambulance so that they can do a visual assessment of the patient as well, and if the patient is deemed having a stroke, an ischemic stroke, for example, that makes up about 80% of the strokes that we encounter today, we can start them on thrombolytics in the back of the ambulance, so we can start TPA onboard before we start heading back to the hospital. And that's traditionally a medication and treatment you wouldn't receive unless you were at the hospital. If they're having a hemorrhagic stroke, we're able to diagnose that on the ambulance as well. We can check their blood, analyze their blood on the ambulance. If they have a coagulopathy, that is the reason why they're bleeding in the brain, then we can also start them on reversal agents on the ambulance. So we can start them on medications to stop or slow down that bleeding, even reduce the swelling. And we also have specific blood pressure medications that we can administer to keep tighter blood pressure control of those stroke patients. And previously, you really couldn't do that on an ambulance, because you really didn't know what kind of stroke a person was having, whether it was an ischemic stroke and hemorrhagic stroke, and what kind of hemorrhagic stroke would really dictate how you could manage that person in a prehospital setting. And without the ability to do that imaging, we really didn't have that capability up until now. So we've really made a lot of leaps and bounds with this kind of technology, the ability to be able to do these kinds of imaging and studying, and bring in and use our telemedicine technology to bring our physicians to the back of the ambulance to be able to meet our goal of reducing time to treatment. So I could speak for hours about this, but I've got about five minutes. I did want to leave it open for any questions that you guys might have.
So you said it might be in Batavia soon. How soon?
As early as next week.
That's soon. Great.
Yeah, and again, it's a partnership with local EMS, so we currently function out of CDH's EMS system, which services West Chicago, Wheaton, Carroll Stream, Glen Allen, and Rozelle in one field. And when we are dispatched out to strokes, we partner with the local EMS guys who are already on scene, and we essentially collaborate on each one of those cares. So any measure of success that we've had over this course of this last year has been directly attributed to the work that we've been able to do with the local guys on scene.
How many units do you have?
Just the one.
Just the one?
Just the one. Yes, sir. Just the one.
Any plans for all this?
It's my dream to have many, many more. But just the one currently.
I did notice that they said in the memo here that the hours of operation for this unit would be from eight to eight.
Correct.
Is that when strokes commonly happen? Is that why that was?
That's a great question. So why did we pick eight to eight? We actually looked at our data over the course of the last two years preceding the mobile stroke unit to see where our biggest incidence of strokes seemed to happen in the community. And 78% of our stroke patients actually came in between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. It's not to say strokes don't happen at night, but in our experience, what we tend to see is people will have something that's symptomatic of a stroke, and rather than go to the hospital or call 911 or tell someone about it, they might decide to take a nap and see how they feel later. So typically, what we tend to find is the majority of those patients will wait and not call those symptoms out until the following morning. So to be as financially responsible as we could, we were looking at where we could essentially get the biggest bang for our buck, and those were the hours of operation. Now, having said that, we're continuing to monitor that data to see if anything's going to change over the course of the next several years, and if we notice that that trend seems to shift, then we'll adjust our hours accordingly. The hours of eight to eight don't mirror our hospital hours. Our hospital actually runs seven to seven shifts, so eight to eight is actually outside of what our hospital normally runs, but we wanted to make sure that we had hours in place that met the community's needs. So the biggest question is always, would we go 24 hours potentially? If the volume supported that, absolutely.
Yeah.
I mean, the thing that I think all the local residents have to appreciate is if these folks, they find it necessary to be called, we're probably in all instances have a Tri-City ambulance on the scene, and we're there treating the patient before you get there.
Absolutely.
And we'll be able to communicate with them on their way as to what's happening, and they can begin to give some ideas of things to do and preparation and whatever. So this is kind of a model system. As you know, with the Tri-City ambulance, we have been cited by the governor's office as the model in the state for intergovernmental consolidation of service, and this is one that we proudly carry forth, but this, I think, will continue to enhance the service over and beyond what is kind of the standard for EMS in the region now. We're going to be a couple steps above it, thanks to the cooperation of CDH and Northwestern and everybody else that's been helping us out with this whole thing.
Yeah, they're a remarkable group of individuals, absolutely.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Stephanie, do you want to make some comments?
No. And she just said it all, and Chief Deike did, so we're just really excited to get this out in the field and bring it to the residents' homes. That's her focus. I've been really excited and trying to, you know, keep it moving so everyone can come fast enough.
We've talked a lot.
Yes.
And she's been good at communicating this to the board, so she's the one that kind of has been the driving force of this, so I just wanted to publicly thank and commend her for her actions, because a lot of this has happened because she's been moving this program along. So this is the type of thing that doesn't happen overnight. There's a lot of paperwork and documents to sign and everything to get this thing into action, and we've been able to do it, so.
Yeah, we've all lost a lot of sleep.
Yes.
Just one quick question?
Yes, sir.
You know, modern medicine today, I mean, the advances we've made, and a lot of it has been through war and through battles, and is this something from a recent war or anything that this came about?
Well, I'll tell you, the first people to actually do this wasn't in the U.S. The first people to actually come up with a mobile stroke unit, the idea of taking everything that you would need in a hospital and putting it in the back of an ambulance was out of Germany. So Germany did this, and they published their findings with the goal of decreasing time to treatment back in 2013. The first people to do it in the U.S. was actually out of the University of Texas in Houston. So when you look at where these mobile stroke units started and where they have been and started here and how it's progressed, the majority of them are starting in university-affiliated organizations. This is essentially the first one to start in a community-based facility, because the resources are a little bit different, the cost is a little bit different, but the cost that we incur doesn't translate to the community. So it's essentially the cheapest stroke you'll ever have, because we don't charge anything different than what normal EMS does. The operational cost is carried by the hospital itself. But it's the right thing to do.
I have the honor of serving as chairman of the Tri-City ambulance board, and I would just share with you the little statistic that in many days, the number of responses that the Tri-City ambulance does in the three towns, we have five ambulances, it's not unusual for each town to maybe give us 10 calls a day. So we have a tremendous demand here, and I'm sure that this service is going to fall right into a quick call for a niche, because we have a huge number of calls that we are generating with the existing service. And in the case of Batavia, with the presence of places like Homestead and Heritage Woods and River Rain, and now with the new windmill place out there, we've got the ready audience that's immediately in the criteria that needs medical service on a regular, ongoing basis. And some days, it's very quickly, we're seeing on Batavia's roster, 10 calls real quick for people, and some days, we don't get that many, but many days, we do. So it's a service of all the things we in the city government in Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles are providing, this may, at the end of the day, be one of the most, if not the most valuable service that we got, because this is literally out there saving lives. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Okay, moving then to item number 11, which is Resolution 18-36, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Batavia and the county of Kane for household hazardous waste collection services and rider to the offer of contract. Who's got this one?
I do.
Alderman Wolf.
Thank you. Staff has been considering our options for starting a household hazardous waste program locally for the citizen of Batavia residents. They determined that the Kane County program that they had would probably be the best option for us at this time. We'd have to do it through an intergovernmental agreement to get this started, and basically, this is to pick up what everybody notices, sitting in their garage 10 years after they move into their house, or 20 years when they're ready to move again, that there's this pile of chemicals and things that they bought over the years and only used once or twice, and it just stacks up in the corners, and you want to get rid of it. That's what they'd be picking up. We did discuss at the committee of the whole if there was any other options, and staff's going to look into that to possibly figure out how we could maybe, through our economy of scale, come up with a way that once or twice a year, we could pick up more, because it will take a long time for us to get through all the houses that are in town if everybody were to try to take, you know, available the service. It's a good start. I really hope that there's a way we can come up with, you know, a plan to do some more, because I think this is something that especially, as I've seen in garage sales and you see houses that get cleaned out, you know, when somebody's rehabbing, there's always stuff that just sits out there. That's where we are at. Does anybody have any questions or comments after what came out of the committee?
Anybody, any questions or comments?
Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 18-36-R, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Batavia and the county of Kane for household hazardous waste collection services and rider to the offer of contract, RFP 20-017 with U.S. Ecology.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of Resolution 18-36-R. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
No.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ure.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Sorry.
That was approved, 12 yes, one no, and one absent, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, moving to item number 12, which is Resolution 18-35-R, authorizing a purchase of three police department patrol vehicles in the amount of $84,612. Alderman Wolf.
patrol division. We discussed this at the committee of the whole meeting, and these are all four-wheel-drive, they are all-wheel-drive vehicles. I think the department is much happier in those, especially during the winter months. And I think pretty much the entire force has become used to being up a little bit higher in the air and a little bit better view from those vehicles, and as far as we know, so far, they've been very good. We haven't had any major issues, I think, with them as we switch the fleet over to these. And this would come through the state purchase program, our Northwest Municipal Conference Suburban Purchasing Cooperative is what would come through.
Any questions on it?
Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 18-35-R, authorizing purchase of three police department patrol vehicles for $84,612.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Metzl for the approval of the bid for the three police cars. Any discussion further? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atak.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Motion's approved. 13 yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, moving to 13, which is Resolution 18-40-R, authorizing execution of agreement between the city of Batavia and the International Association of Firefighters. And Wendy, do you have something you want to share on this?
We talked about this at the COW, but I'll just quickly summarize. The IAFF with the city of Batavia, we've come through good faith bargaining, come to a three-year agreement, which presented before you. The highlights, the major highlights are year one have agreed to wages, and then years two and three are going to be wage reopeners. And they've been, we've also have some instituted some fitness standards, which is a new benefit as well to the employees as well as to the city, a benefit, and this is something we're going to try out with this contract and hopefully look at it and analyze it on both sides, as well as we, probably the other larger item was an update to the drug alcohol policy that's just as reflecting the new federal guidelines. So I don't know if anyone has any additional questions.
Any questions? I might note that Wendy and her staff have spent a lot of time on this and gone through this item by item and piece by piece, and have had numerous meetings with them and trying to work out all the finite details of this thing. So I just commend their good efforts in putting together, I think, is one of the better contracts we've done here, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion then for the approval of the contract.
So moved.
Say it. Moved by Alderman Atak, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of the IAFF contract from 2018 to 2020. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Atak.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atak.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
No.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atak.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
How many did we have?
Just one.
Okay, the motion's approved. 12 yes, one no, and one absent. Okay, going to the administrators' report.
Good evening. Tonight, for the administrators' report, I'd like to talk a little bit about the community survey that will be launched here in the next couple of days. As a result of the discussion in the last committee of the whole meeting, talking about the plans going forward for creating a new strategic plan for the city, you advised that you'd like to see the results of a community survey. And doing research, I found that the city had done community surveys for a number of years. In fact, up until 2010, they had done seven annual community surveys, and they had a robust collection of data from all of those past surveys. And so what I've done is take that survey, really haven't changed the questions much at all, so that we can line up the new results of the survey with where things were at back in 2010 for comparison's sake. And all of that has been loaded into an online program that's called Survey Monkey, and that would allow us to push that out to all of the residents of Batavia. Previously, the survey was sent out to 1,500 randomly selected residents, and they needed to get back about a 30% return for the results to be statistically significant. But with utilizing today's technology, we hope that we're going to be able to reach a lot more homes and then have more robust results for us to review as we head into the project of strategic planning. Chris Codworth is designing a postcard that will go to all homes, letting them know how they can fill out the survey online, but also providing them with contact information at the city if they would either like a paper copy of the survey sent to them, or if they'd like to make an appointment to come in and fill out a paper copy of the survey, or sit down at a laptop and fill out an electronic version of the survey. They can do that as well. And we'll want to make sure that we get in contact with all of the other city agencies and units of local government so that they can advertise this as well. We hope to reach as many households as possible and have that survey be open for responses for the rest of the month of April. Does anybody have any questions?
I'm assuming, will this be put on the website?
Yes.
Social media?
Yes.
Email?
Yes, it will be hard to avoid. I'm even thinking the electronic boards out in front of the fire stations on Wilson Street, reminding people that the community survey is available. I hope to have it in a number of different places. It's unfortunate, we just put our information in for the Neighbor's Magazine, but that's the May-June Neighbor's Magazine. So unfortunately, we weren't able to avail ourselves of advertising in that location, but we can get it on their website.
The library would be a nice spot for money to fill it out if they would.
That's a great idea.
Next door as well.
Next door?
The app.
McDonald's?
Oh.
It's not a bad idea.
The next door, the app.
The AM.
Yeah. Any of the social media stuff that we have available to us, and I'm sure Chris can blanket all of that, and then like Homestead and the other things to set up either time or help for people to do that if they need assistance with it.
Exactly.
Alderman Chanset?
Do we have a way to, you know, to prevent someone from accidentally voting on this that doesn't live here? I recognize that there's a vote early, vote often thing that could happen. How do we prevent a Geneva resident from accidentally weighing in?
We certainly can't prevent that, but things aren't perfect with the paper either. That could be handed off to someone else to respond to as well. I'm not sure, we ask them which area of the city they live in, but that doesn't keep people from being dishonest.
Which is the fact that we engage people directly through 1,500 random people, sending it to people who are obviously residents of our corporate limits. Just occurred to me that social media might get a hold of this link, and it's entirely possible that those IP addresses will not be in the city of Batavia.
When I was researching what other communities are doing for the way that they're pushing their survey out, I did see a ton of people using Survey Monkey, just as an example.
Do they ask if they're a resident? Just say, are you a city resident?
We do, in that they have to identify where in the city they live is one of the, that's actually the last question, which quadrant of the city they live in.
Alderman. Can you make? Go ahead. You know, I think it's a good idea to do a survey, but how much will this cost the city?
So the postcard, I have to look into what the bulk mailing rates are, but so far, that's the only expense. Survey Monkey, we have already had a subscription to Survey Monkey, so that wasn't an additional cost. And then Survey Monkey will also compile the data and produce the report, and as well, I can put the report in the exact same format as in the 2010 survey results, because I do have all of the Excel spreadsheets of the previous compilation. So I'm imagining at most a couple of, maybe $1,400 to $2,000 for the special mailing of the postcard.
Seventeen and a half cents if you saturate.
Seventeen and a half cents per postcard. Thank you.
Alderman Serone?
No, I was just going to say, in that question, what quadrant do you live in, is there an option to say, I do not live in the city limits?
There is not.
Can that be added? Because if somebody's, let's say, works here and lives in Geneva, if they don't have the option, they might either not answer or put something else, but they might be answering the questionnaire honestly, but they don't live, and then we can judge whether we utilize that info or not.
Sure.
Alderman Callahan?
First off, thank you for getting this done as quickly as you did. I know it's important to you, and it's important to a lot of us, so thank you for that first and foremost. Second, the resident that made a suggestion of putting it in the utility billing would be another way that we could make sure that it goes out to all the residents.
Exactly. Yeah, we'll put it out in the usual utility billing cycle.
Right.
Anybody else in the council of comments or questions? Okay?
Okay, thank you.
You have something else?
I don't.
Oh. Any questions on the administrator tonight? She'll be here tomorrow night, too, so you.
I could steal your thunder on the One Washington place is still scheduled to go before Plan Commission on April 18th, and there's a lot of exchange of information going on about the geometry of the parking garage itself and the amenities that will be included, and what State Street adjacent to the building is going to look like as well. So there's been a lot of healthy back-and-forth discussion, but things still seem to be on track for that April 18th date.
Okay, anybody else with an administrator? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Go to committee reports. Community development, Alderman Brown?
Just a couple meetings to announce, your honor. Committee of the whole is going to start tomorrow evening at 7:00 P.M. Few items on their agenda that others will announce. And then the Plan Commission is scheduled for Wednesday at 7:00 P.M. Two items on their agenda, one is a variance for a second-story addition and an awning at 1141 Morton Street, and the other one is for a public hearing for a variance for tower signs at the Windmill Creek Shopping Center, which is at the southwest corner of Randall Road and Main Street. Then historic preservation is scheduled for April 9th, Monday at 5:30, and then that evening later on, Bicycle Commission is scheduled to meet at 7:00 P.M. also. That's all I have.
Okay, Government Services, Alderman Atak?
Government Services does not have anything on the agenda for so far this month. I'll add that the Environmental Commission meeting starts at 7:00 P.M. on Wednesday, April 11th, so.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, your honor. We have nothing on the agenda for tomorrow night's COW meeting. We do have the sidewalk and curb replacement program coming in on April 10th. And then also reminded everybody that this month, brush pickup starts, or yard waste pickup starts, so make sure you follow the rules and look for the dates on the city website.
Okay, Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
We have a couple of things for tomorrow night, your honor. We will discuss authorizing execution of an agreement with the Illinois State Toll Highway Authority. We will be approving a task order number seven with Power Systems Engineering to do some assessment of a 34 KV and 12 KV model update, and we'll be authorizing dynamic ratings to perform monitoring equipment upgrade. And that should do it.
Okay. Anybody else on the council have other business you'd like to bring up? Okay, moving to 18, the mayor's report. I just have a couple announcements. Tomorrow morning at 10:30, the Kane County Forest Preserve District is going to have a ribbon cutting out at the Settlers Hills landfill on Fabian Parkway, in which they're going to begin construction of a running path on top of it. And they're going to, hopefully, this will be a new attraction to that area, and they seem to think they're going to get quite a few people who are going to be challenged because it's up and down, and you're going up hills, and it's a good use of space they can't do anything else with, you can't build a building on it, and it's got a number of other issues associated with it. But this will be, I think, kind of a model thing for the region, so it'll be interesting to see how it comes together. I don't know how long it's going to take to construct. I'm assuming I will learn more tomorrow, and certainly if anybody in the council wants to come out with me, they're more than welcome to come out. It's 10:30 tomorrow morning out on Fabian Parkway. And then later in the day, just so you understand what's going on here, we're going to have a Chamber of Commerce, Batavia Chamber of Commerce ribbon cutting in Geneva. And they are going to go up, and they've got Vane Clinics of America, which is over on Randall Road, they're kind of kitty-corner from the McDonald's on Randall Road in Geneva, kind of behind it. Vane Clinic is apparently been taken over by some new folks, and they've got, they want to be known as a tri-city institution, so I guess they're joining all three of the Chamber of Commerces, but they want myself to come up there, and I have a rule that I don't go to any other town and cut anybody else's ribbon without the other mayor at least knowing about it, and hopefully standing there with me with their hand in the scissors, if that's what. And I've been dragged into this a number of times down in Aurora, on the Butterfield Road area out there, where those businesses out there like to be, think of themselves as Batavia businesses, and so they're all joining the chamber. But anyway, so that one, I always have the mayor of Aurora join me out there at Butterfield Road. But tomorrow, we're invited up to be at Vane Clinics at 3:00. So again, if any of you would like to come to Geneva for a Batavia Chamber of Commerce ribbon cutting, we're going to be at Vane Clinics on Randall Road, they're right behind McDonald's at 3:00 tomorrow afternoon. And I appreciate that over the last, we've been, as most of you know, or all of you know, we've been doing quite a few ribbon cuttings. And other Saturday morning, we did the new bookstore, and Alderman Er was, I think, the first person there. And last, what was the next one I went to? Oh, I was up to the Dollar Tree, and Alderman Rosato joined me. Was there somebody else from the council there? But one of you's always been coming with me, I'm getting used to it now, so. So I appreciate everybody coming, because, you know, it certainly shows that we're interested. I will tell you that I was amazed, I guess that's the word I will use, when I did that ribbon cutting last Thursday at the Dollar Tree. And I guess I had never paid much attention to the Dollar Tree when it was previously in Batavia. They were in the little store to the south of Target, and they had a second store in Geneva right to the north of Best Buy. And so they told me that both of those stores were very undersized for the inventory that they carry and the needs of their customers. So they ended up going out there on Randall Road and basically taking over the space that used to be the Office Depot. And they opened up, and, I don't know, we got there, and there must have been 20, 30 people standing there at the ribbon cutting, waiting, panting to get in the door. And before I could get the ribbon cut, man, those folks were going in the door to get to the Dollar Tree. And then I came back about an hour and a half later, and every spot in the parking lot of that place was full. And so I got out and attempted to go back in, well, there were so many people walking around in there that I didn't bother to merge myself into it. But then I was back out on Saturday morning, I guess it was, and again, the parking lot was full. So there is a big customer base for Dollar Tree stores in the region, and, you know, people were just happy as they could be that that store reopened itself in Batavia. So you never know what's going to catch the fancy of the public, but that one certainly has. And we continue to have, I'm very pleased by this, we continue to have a number of people making inquiries about moving into Batavia, both in downtown and on Randall Road, and we'll see where it all goes. I can share with you, I can't share any names, because I don't think anything's been signed, but we are being talked to by some folks that are looking at the old Walgreens store in downtown Batavia. And I guess saying no more than that, they probably want to eat there if they're going to do anything. So we'll see what we get there. But there are people that have got their measuring tapes out, and they're over there measuring doors and counting parking spaces and everything you do when you're making a decision about whether or not you're going to bring a business into town. So that one seems to be going. That's a very, become, I'm sure, with all the council, a pretty common question by people, what's going to happen at the old Walgreens store? And it's been there now for almost two years, sitting there with its paper on the window, people standing there at the ribbon cutting, waiting, panting to get in the door. And before I could get the ribbon cut, man, those folks were going in the door to get to the Dollar Tree. And then I came back about an hour and a half later, and every spot in the parking lot of that place was full. And so I got out and attempted to go back in, well, there were so many people walking around in there that I didn't bother to emerge myself into it. But then I was back out on Saturday morning, I guess it was, and again, the parking lot was full. So there is a big customer base for Dollar Tree stores in the region, and, you know, people were just happy as they could be that that store was reopened itself in Batavia. So you never know what's going to catch the fancy of the public, but that one certainly has. And we continue to have, I'm very pleased by this, we continue to have a number of people making inquiries about moving into Batavia, both in downtown and on Randall Road, and we'll see where it all goes. I can share with you, I can't share any names because I don't think anything's been signed, but we are being talked to by some folks that are looking at the old Walgreens store in downtown Batavia. And I guess saying no more than that, they probably want to eat there if they're going to do anything. So we'll see what we get there. But there are people that have got their measuring tapes out, and they're over there measuring doors and counting parking spaces and everything you do when you're making a decision about whether or not you're going to bring a business into town. So that one seems to be going. That's a very, become, I'm sure with all the council, a pretty common question by people, what's going to happen at the old Walgreens store? And it's been there now for two, almost two years, sitting there with its paper on the window, and sounds like that may be in the mood to be changed, so we'll see what happens. So all good things. Gary, you want to say something?
I just wanted to clarify because it was mentioned tonight, and there actually was an error in this week's weekly email blast. A couple of years ago, council directed that the brush collection program be shifted to May. So the brush collection program does not begin until the month of May, and then it gets shifted into the fall because council wanted it to continue until November. So brush collection runs from May through November, does not begin in April.
Thank you. And the other thing, the other experience I had last week is that, I don't even think, Gary, have we started putting together the sidewalk repair program for this year yet?
Yes, we did.